Good evening, thank you for joining us tonight on what was intended to be the February 1st, 2023 School Board Meeting. Unfortunately, due to different family and illness circumstances, we only have two members present tonight, myself and Ms. Harrison, and therefore we're going to have a non-meeting. We still felt it was important to provide updates from the SAU, updates from LMS, and continue with board business. We cannot vote on anything, we do not have that authority, and technically, I can't call the meeting to order. I do still think we should say the Pledge of Allegiance, though, so I'd like to do that.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so again, we're kind of using the agenda as our, the agenda that we were going to use as our basis for today, but technically, this is a non-meeting that is just being aired publicly for public attention. So, with that, I don't think we need to discuss review and revision of the agenda. We don't have to do summary of non-public minutes. Presentations and recognitions, so report from Principal Grantham, LMS principal. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Jen.
Thanks. So, I am here to let you know we have some changes in our enrollment. We've had a couple come and a couple go, so our enrollment has slightly changed. I can't connect on my computer, so I'm looking over there to see what the new numbers are, but we're at 353 total at LMS, and we have a lot of really great things happening at LMS at the moment. I have brought with me this evening Robin Corbille, who is our computer teacher, as well as our, one of our robotics coaches, and she's got a little presentation there that has some interactive features, so if you're at home watching and you want to click in on that link, you will also be able to see what Robin has to share with you.
Alright, so this is what the kids at LMS have been up to for part of the first semester. So, we have a new platform that we did this year, which is Make Code Arcade. We've done this one other year, and the kids got to make retro arcade games. And Brianna's was, we sent out the top 11 games to the 8th grade, had them test for us, and Brianna's game was the first place winner for that. So if you click on that link, you can actually play that. These can be downloaded to phones, they can be played on phones. They can actually be played with an Xbox controller, as the kids would play on our big board every once in a while and kind of look at that, so if you click on the A, I'm putting...
You're gonna make me actually do this?
Yes.
I'm terrible at video games, I just want to be clear.
Because the kids do it to me all the time, so they, they have different splash screens and stuff that tell you to get coins, to open doors. They created sprites, backgrounds, and they did all the coding for these, so they're kind of cool. They're very proud of these games. This one was done independently, so you're trying to collect, use your arrow keys.
Okay.
And you're trying to collect all of the gold coins there before time runs out on you, and then you try to open doors.
I think that's a cursed one.
Well, you can go into the lava, but go get a gold one first.
Yay.
Yay, that's good, and so they had to program all of that to happen as a reaction to making that, and you wanna navigate up arrow.
Can't move.
Turn around somehow.
Yeah.
How do I turn around?
ASWD also works, no, the up arrow should work. It might be user error.
You really are bad.
I got one.
So you have a good score of one.
I am horrible. You all have the link, go ahead, beat me.
If you go back to the slideshow, there's actually another game that was, that will let Mr. Jettie try again, Dr. Jettie. It is a version of Mario, and this was actually done by two students together, so they coded together. That's, that was their problem-solving section, and this is like off of Mario, and each one of those sprites they created from pixels, yeah, like from pixels, so, yeah, and then they have... Yeah, if they get the wrong, and the kids...
I have to avoid the mushroom hat, right?
Educate, yeah, educating me, those have a name in Mario, so there's...
It's a Goomba.
Yeah, thank you, it's a Goomba, if they get a Goomba, they want to get the mushrooms, because those give them points.
Oh, I do?
Do, yeah, you want the mushrooms, yeah.
Not the brown ones.
Not the round ones, the other little mushrooms. But what was really neat about this, this is our, our ending project, is all of the classes worked incredibly well together. I was so impressed with their ability to, you know, sit at one computer and kind of work through different problems and talk through them, so that was a pretty cool end the kids.
You only scored one again, loved it.
Sorry, you have time to improve, right?
I'm terrible, I'll keep practicing.
So that was pretty cool. The second slide is just more games, if you're bored and need some more time. Jack and Vincent, Jack is a 7th grader, Vincent is a 6th grader, also made some pretty cool games. I gave them shout-outs, because they were pretty good. And then if we go to the next slide, this is the iRobot Root. These are kids, this is a gentleman, Zach, who programmed this to draw a square and erase it within the first three days of being in my class this semester. So that was pretty cool, he was pretty excited about it, he said, "Mrs. Corbille, can I film this on my phone?" And I said, "Wait a sec, let me get it quiet and everything," because he wanted to show his sister, because she doesn't get to take the class because she's in course, so he was excited, I think it was course, just to show her what we were doing in class and how that was working. So they had to program sound, lights, and movement, so he draws the square, and then he actually picks the marker up, puts an eraser down, and he backtracks and erases the square. So again, pretty cool for kids who have been in class for three days, they seem to love these. I'm an ambassador now for iRobot, I've been for the last three years, which gives us some advantages as far as access to virtual tours and things like visits and things like that. They also, the 12 Roots that we purchased for the district, we got 50% off over the last two years. So they're really nice, we replaced what we were doing for entry-level coding with the Root program, and the kids, if this is any indication, really took to that, being able to instantly connect up to something and see it move, so that was pretty cool. Most of what we did before that was virtual, for the introductory decoding. So that's kind of a cool, just fun thing that Zach did to share out. And then if we go to the last slide, look at, I am lying.
Oh, hang on. There we go.
So this is our first Lego teams, they had a great season, we've had two competitive teams. One of the things that they just wanted to, you know, let the community know is that our 8th grade team actually went out and volunteered at two separate Saturday events. They were at the Wicked STEM Expo and the Girl Scout Expo, and they were able to work with students and kind of inspire other kids to try coding, try robotics, and so that was a really nice opportunity for them. And then our 7th grade team, I think the most amazing thing about them was that they worked so well together as a team, that they were actually recognized at their qualifying competition for their core values, so they definitely made LMS.
And the core values are?
All of them.
Yeah.
Most of all, working together, having fun, professionalism, those type of things. But it is that, how we treat one another and how we're able to get things accomplished as a group, so those, those kind of core skills are really important. And our last and final big exciting thing that we're doing for the first time ever is Lego Global and First reached out, and they wanted to come and work with our students for a few days, and just kind of, you know, try out some different things, and give the kids an opportunity to see some of the things that are up and coming maybe. So they are scheduled to visit on February 16th through the 19th, and they're gonna be working with both of the robotics teams during BAST, so they'll get to do that. And then we've also arranged it, thanks to Mr. Solzen, to get at least one 5th grade class to interact and kind of see what's out there and see how that kind of works. And then we have two 6th grade classes, so we actually have kids at 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade who will be able to kind of participate in this kind of reverse field trip-ish type event. I've never done this before, but it sounds amazing for the kids, so we look forward to that. Jen and I have already signed a nondisclosure for that, and they also requested that we sign a gift acceptance, so there may be a gift that comes out of this, I don't know, but for the school, so that was kind of just another added bonus.
If it reaches the value of, that we need to reach it to, we will definitely reach out to you again, come back to you if it does, but...
That's good.
A donation, but yeah, so... So those are some, just some new exciting things that we added to the curriculum this year to kind of, you know, help kids master those skills, not only with the computer science, but the social-emotional, being able to work together in a group, and accomplish difficult tasks, and what to do when something doesn't work the way it's supposed to, so, very exciting.
Nice, it's always good to hear the wonderful things that you're doing with these kids. I know my son was on the first team years and years ago. He's a freshman this year, but took Programming 1 and is excelling at it. I think he just has that kind of, that mind, but I think this also set him up for success, too, being able to participate in this and, and your computer science classes, I think it's great.
And all of that, I, I think as a district, when I look across the state of New Hampshire, we have a really strong, supportive middle school STEM program. I mean, when I look and I compare it to other school districts, or when I go out to places, they're like, "Wow, you're doing that in middle school," so I think that that really helps our kids.
Or that you have a whole team that was, young ladies.
Oh, yeah, the robot, but not just above and the robotics, the, the programming that you all put forward in our school, between the tech ed and the integration into the regular classrooms, I think that, you know, and the computer science, that these kids are being introduced to programming very early, really helps them to figure out their strengths for college and stuff, so we appreciate that.
Thank you for coming in, Ms. Corbille.
You're welcome.
Yeah. You can stay if you want.
I'm gonna hang up for like two and a half minutes?
Make it five, Robin, come on, you've got that. So, so many amazing things happening at LMS to kind of highlight. Our, our sports teams are underway in the season, it's been a little bit of a struggle this year. They're forming some new teams with, we have a new boys' basketball coach, and our cheerleading team has been doing a great job cheering at the games, it's nice to see them there. And then we have our chorus and band to highlight, our drama club is beginning their spring show. Lots of things going on, I don't want to read line by line for you, so I'll skip over to the next part. C3PO, which I know you've talked about here at the board level, our C3PO team is creating a culture and climate for positive outcome.
Can I just say, I so appreciate that acronym.
Thanks. I will say, we may have had some...
No, no, my car is car two D two, so, yes.
Yes, I'm a little bit of a Star Wars geek, but the kids thought that was kind of cool, too, as we were talking about the ideas and putting it together, and it has a catchy name, so they, they hang on to it. We've had a team of teachers, as well as a team of students, who've been working together with, within our building, and then also with the Bills, to kind of put together a plan. That survey will be coming out soon for more information. We had our 8th grade end-of-the-year trip launch, starting to talk to families about Nature's Classroom and about some end-of-the-year activities for 8th grade, to be able to go on trips that are not Washington DC, as we know that was not a loved decision, but one that we had to make for the best interest of the group at large. Students that don't choose to go on Nature's Classroom, perfectly fine, those will be regular school days at school, where they can come and, and spend those three days with a teacher who will be staying back and have activities planned for them at school in case of, you know, they're not comfortable in going, or they just don't want to go. That's totally okay, they're welcome to make a different choice. The next part, I know, has been a question, so I'm really excited to kind of talk about this here, is about iReady and what we are doing with our iReady information and our iReady data. So our reading, we are, our reading specialist and our halftime reading tutor, as well as now we have a math tutor that is finally employed and ready to work with us and work with our students on meeting those academic needs. One of the things that we recognized at the start of this year, at the end of last year, was that we have some significant gaps in student learning, that there is definitely a place where students are demonstrating where they are not functioning at grade level, and how can we help to close those gaps? iReady is one of those tools that we utilize to help that happen. The iReady data comes out in the fall, we have the benchmark tests, shall you say, so there's one given in the fall, one given in the winter, and then a follow-up given in the spring. Those benchmark tests are kind of snippets that give those students a place where they start in the My Learning Plan activities that are part of what we use for iReady. So, when they test, if they test and they come in at 4th grade level, even if they're a 6th grader, then the, then My Learning Plan is gonna start them at 4th grade level and try to close that gap and give them lessons that are specific to where they are functioning. There was some question, this, this specific term, in regards to why we were doing retakes or re-dos or repeats. There are a couple of reasons that those happen. One, a student could be flagged with a red or a yellow flag as part of iReady, as that they rushed through the test. The teacher was able to sit with the student and say, "Hey, it looks like you rushed here, let's go back and, and do that test again." The second reason that they may have been asked to retake a test was if there was a significant dip in score. Not every student who lost a point or declined by one or declined by two was required to retake that test. And in fact, in talking to teachers today, we had some two students and parents who requested, "Have them take it again, that wasn't quite it, have them take it again, that wasn't quite where they wanted, wanted them to be." Kids who came in at end of 8th grade level, and then in the winter took the test and came in at end of 6th grade level, that's a huge discrepancy from where they started, and what we wanted to see is, is this really where they are? Because if they've lost that much information in the last five months, then that discrepancy, we've got to really close that gap, because something significant happens. Kids shouldn't lose learning over the course of a school year, as they're attending school and getting what they need to get in instruction. If there's a learning gap, then we need to address that, and we need to see what's going on. So is that a true reflection, or was it a bad day for the student? Did they just come back from a snow day and a remote learning day, and then we started the testing that following Tuesday? Is it that they just weren't ready to set into the mode of school, so in some cases, they were retested? I went around and asked specific teachers, one math class, there were a total of six students across the entire grade level that was required to retake it. In another math class, she gave it to zero students, in another math class, they gave it to maybe five or six students, and then in the final math class, there was a little bigger chunk of, of how many kids took it, of more than 15. But it was, again, kids that showed that significant discrepancy, it wasn't a one or two-point discrepancy, it was that drop in score, just to make sure that that was an accurate reflection, because we use that data to help drive instruction. That data doesn't go to the state, that data doesn't go anywhere that's marking against us, that data is for teachers to be able to take a look at and help to build a package together that helps them formulate a learning plan for their students, and both within the My Learning Plan, that's part of the iReady package that we utilize on a regular basis, as well as within the classroom setting, they know exactly what targeted skills that students need to work on. So we want to make sure that we have the most current and accurate data for those students. But we had a conversation as a whole staff today, I think there was some miscommunication and misunderstanding communicated to some students, and that was clarified today. I think both Dr. Jettie and Mr. Totten were there today to have that conversation with us, we heard it all together. And so there was some miscommunication for that, we apologize, it was not intended for every kid to retake it until their score was better to make it look good, it was to make sure it was an accurate representation for kids.
And just to, to really punctuate the point, because I know some of the chatter on social media was that this is about the school looking good, it's all internal data. It's about helping our staff to drive that personal improvement for students. It doesn't get reported anywhere, so it's not about school image, it's about making sure that we know where the gaps are, so that we can address them. There's nothing worse than a student blows a test off, and then we're trying to provide a filler for a gap that's been identified, and the kid knows the material, so it's really kind of a waste of everybody's time.
We have, we have limited resources for those tier two, as I said, we have the reading specialist, the halftime tutor for reading, the halftime tutor for math. I don't want to take those resources and expend them in places that we don't necessarily need them, so we want to make sure the data that we have is valid. Anyone that does not want to have their student participate in a retake can feel free to reach out to their team of teachers, that's the most appropriate place, because that's where the retakes are generated from. So if you have a student that you don't want to retake or re, repeat a test, feel free to reach out to your team of teachers, because that's the place that's gonna help you get to that point. And then comes construction, this light at the end of the tunnel, we're almost there. We're happy to have light, the last time we were here was just before we had the famous power outage and the power situation happened at LMS, where we lost power. That power did have some impact on our heating systems, and we have been working very closely with North Branch to make sure everything is up and running and, and working to the 100% efficiency and effectiveness. It's continuing to be a progress, we had a, a meeting today to discuss it. But at this point in time, I can happily report that every classroom at LMS is back in their home location. Nobody is on a cart or floating or in a wrong place. Everybody has a place and space to work on, and we actually gained a couple of fantastic new places, so we're able to kind of get a little more elbow room and spread out a little bit. One of the things that we did today's staff meeting was to kind of do a, go on a tour, take a, take a colleague that you might not have talked to in the last couple days, go check out what their room looked like, and some of the feedback that we had when they came back was, "Oh my gosh, that was such a cool space, so relaxing to have that additional location for students and kids to work together," so it's, it's, it's awesome, so we're happy to finally almost be there. North Branch will be departing, hopefully, on, no offense to North Branch, on February 17th, and on that day, we will be having a high-vis day at LMS, where we will have all of our students wearing high-vis, so wearing bright neon colors to kind of send them off with a, a thank you, because really, they've, they've done a lot of work for us, they've been very accommodating to us while, while we're under construction, and our teachers have been remarkable in their flexibility and the ability to turn on a dime and move to another location and have all these different things happening at the same time. It's been great, teachers and students. That's all for my report, I think, I know that was long-winded, but I wanted to make sure I got the clear description out for iReady.
Do you have a couple of questions on iReady?
Yep.
If I can, how many retakes are allowed, or how many were given? Can they do more than one, is, was there some students, I was hearing three to four for some students, which is a little concerning.
I agree with you 1,000% on that. I went back and took a look today, after, after the email I received last night, was the first question I had where more than one retake was taken. There was a discrepancy in directions and understanding, that students should only get one retake. In some cases, they did take up to two or three, or, or in process of the third, and, and we had that very clear, that stop. There is, there is no point in bashing one's head against the wall, what's the definition of insanity? Keep doing the same thing and expecting a different outcome, that's not the purpose of the test. We don't want to have kids meeting with frustration, we don't want to have teachers meeting with frustration, because they're not finishing the test. The ones that did the retake were to do it in the window, so those two to three retakes, because there's the fall window, would be the first benchmark, and then there are some cases where there were up to three in progress, two completed and one still in progress.
Can parents request copies of all of the data from each of the tests, or does the retake replace the data?
I'm not really sure about the answer to that question, they reflect...
Robin's gonna answer. I work with my kids in BAST. Any one of your children can open up their iReady page, the kid showed me today, because I don't have access to it as a unified arts teacher, and they can click on their My Progress, and then they can actually filter for diagnostic, and it will show you the scores that they took. So it'll show you their first score in September, and then it'll show you whatever other tests they've taken. And so if you haven't looked at your kids' iReady, again, my kids that come in with me at BAST, every once in a while will show me different things, here's where you can see how many minutes a week they've spent on it, active minutes, so there's, if you haven't had a chance, let them show you what they have there, because they always feel good when they can teach you something, so that's a, they can take you through the process, but there is a place in there that you can see, at least, just that, like, it doesn't give you all the information, it just gives you that raw number.
Okay.
But you can see it, so that, I was interested in that one for my kids.
Yeah. And again, they... We have a few, a few students left who haven't finished their first test still, so it's, there's no instructional time that is being lost as a part of any retakes that have taken place, but the direction has been given that we're all done with retakes at this point in time, we're moving forward with the data that we have as valid, and, and that, you know, if it's one data point, there's, there's a million.
And then my next question was, there was something raised about extended school year somehow, that students thought that they might have to do summer school if they didn't test well on iReady. Do we know where that came from?
Yes, yep, that, so that was one of the conversations that we've had with teachers as we're looking at, right now, believe it or not, starting to plan for what summer school is going to look like. We have to look at students that we feel as though summer school is really gonna be the best option. The things that we look at for that are things of where their academic grades are, are they, have they not yet met? Are they, and looking at iReady, if there's students that are multiple grade levels below, we want to set them up for success. So the idea of summer school being a punishment is what I want to shift our mindset on, and, and I want to make sure that we understand that the iReady is not a punishment, it's not a, if you don't do this, you're in trouble, it's a question of giving us the best information of how we can help students get better at what they're doing every day. So if summer school is, is their concern, it would be a piece of the picture, but not the sole answer. iReady is not the sole answer to that question.
Is there, I mean, I, obviously I leave it up to you, but has there been any communication with the students since this came up yesterday in terms of reframing or making sure? I, I feel like there's some misinformation that the students have that went home and/or confusion. Somewhere along the way, things were mixed up, and I want the students not to feel that pressure. I wouldn't want, you know, anyone who's been retaking multiple times to feel like they failed or they didn't do a good job, and so I'm just, I'm, I'm sure on a classroom level that's happening, but I, I just would, wanted to put out the question, you know?
It's something that we, we can absolutely pose in, you know, in conversations that we have, Martha and I rotating through BAST, going in and talking to kids as they're, as they're working through. We had, as I said, the clarifying conversation to make sure that there was no misinformation out there from, from teachers to understand what the direction was. It was not about, you lost a point, you have to take it over. It was about, is there a gap in learning that doesn't make sense? Is it an enigma, or it stands out, and, and we'll be able to communicate that with, with students.
Okay, and if parents continue to have concerns about this, you're, direct them to reach out to you or to the classroom teachers?
They can reach out to me or the classroom teachers, either one. I know I've had a couple of conversations with, and Mrs. Theres had a couple of conversations with parents that have had concerns, I really appreciate the direct email, because really, that's the best way we can solve problems, is through communication and getting the information. When retakes were, were happening on the individual level, that happens on a, on a regular basis, and Robin can speak to, that's not a new practice with iReady, because it was, it's something that has been done when they had, was it NIWA?
Yeah, so way back 20 years ago, if, if a child, we knew the scores when they took them, if a child would drop significantly, you know, we'd have the conversation with them and say, "Hey, you dropped significantly on the test, are you sure you worked as hard as you could? Are you sure you really thought about what you were doing?" And usually, we would have the conversation with, you know, "Do you want to take this again?" And we will, we would talk to them about, like, "These scores are being used to help place you in different classes and things like that, and you want, it's, it's 40 minutes or 50 minutes, this is your opportunity to show the world what you can do." So I think phrased in the right way, the kids, almost always, the time you practice would be like, "Okay", and they would do it, and they would get a better score, and then they would feel better, because it actually reflected what they were able to do.
And the sense I'm getting online in, from the parents I've spoken with, isn't that being as much of a concern? If there is a drop or a significant change, it was more the 1 to 2 point ones that, why, why are they having to redo that?
Yeah, and, and that was directly addressed with teachers from the inception of the, of the thought of looking at that gap. 1 to 2 points does not constitute a gap, that's within the confidence interval, that would not be a place.
And we did talk to kids, too, about, like, if we had a kid that, you know, stood on a corner or two, I talked to my kids today in my BAST and said, "Well, why is that?" And, you know, they, they would give reasons, you know, "I, I, I do better when I can stand up and I can move around," and I, and, and these conversations can happen in BAST in a small group, and I said, "Well, you know what, you gotta advocate for yourself, you gotta have that conversation, because as they get to be 6th and 7th and 8th graders, and they know that there are some tests that they're gonna take that are gonna be important, and they've gotta be able," and, and they receive that really well, the, the kids that I had those conversations with. So I, I think, you know, those are good conversations to have with kids about, you know, why did this happen? And, and how can we, how can you make sure that it doesn't happen again? Because ultimately, it's your responsibility, but we're here to support you in that. So I, I think even those small ones, you know what I mean, when you're looking at it, we, we should see growth, right, from September to January?
Yeah.
We shouldn't even just see them stay the same, there should be some, and the kids who did grow were pretty proud of that. Like, I went up, and, you know what I mean, and, and we should celebrate, you know, that, that too, because this is good growth, so I think, you know, having those small conversations with kids, parents with kids, it's, it's really valuable.
Yes.
We had, we had goal-setting meetings within the BAST groups, where students met with teachers to set goals of where they thought they would, would score and how they would achieve, and we had a plan prior to all of this, for a celebration at the end of iReady, to kind of show, this is what you've accomplished, and look at as a school. I mean, we had some students who gained 400% in, in their individual growth. It's about individual growth, it's not measuring one student to another, it's about making sure that every student is taking a step forward and improving. That's, that's our end goal, and making sure that we're closing the gaps when we can.
That's great.
I mean, it's informational text, dude.
Any, any questions, Jen?
Yep.
Okay.
Just under new business, Jen was gonna also report the mid-year progress on...
Just under new business, Jen was gonna also report the mid-year progress on LMS goals. So if we can have her do it now, she could be on her way.
That would be great.
Wonderful. Um, so we have, uh, our first goal is about SCL and responsive classroom. Uh, our counseling program, PMS and PLC models. Um, this year, to start the year on October seventh, we were able to have our school-wide professional development day, one-day training on responsive classroom. Um, we have done a realignment of best block with a home best, um, for more improved small group relationship building. Uh, teachers and staff are modeling social emotional brain breaks and during staff meetings and PLCs. Uh, and we also have implemented a behavior referral form through Google that allows us to kind of figure out where behaviors are happening. Is it happening in the hallway? Is it happening in the classroom, in the lunchroom? Where are things happening? We have a referral sheet that kinda lets us track where referrals are coming from, what's making those refer, what are our most challenging behaviors? And it's gonna allow us to target some really directed intervention in those places to kinda improve student behavior overall. I, I will say again, the behavior of students coming into Litchfield, it, it's amazing what ninety-nine point nine percent of the time we have amazingly polite, well-behaved, respectful students. And the few times that missteps occur, it is, it is small pieces and, and families have been super supportive. But this is just a way for us to kinda take a look at where, where those behaviors are happening and how we can offer supports to the places where they're happening more often. Um, the next.
Although it hasn't happened yet, you have more planned with responsive classroom.
We do.
Just update us on the planning process?
So we are in the process of planning a, during Live to Learn this summer, a four-day, um, workshop for our teachers to be able to come and get the full middle school responsive classroom training, which will allow us to be able to implement that with a little more fidelity next year. And we've got kinda the, the taste test was in October, kinda got some of the ideas of some of the language, some of the ways that the, the program is designed. And then, um, during Live to Learn this summer, teachers are gonna be able to opt in to come to a, it's a four-day training um, from responsive classroom, which is pretty intensive. Um, but will allow our teachers to then have time over the summer to work on how they work on implementing some of those changes in their classrooms next fall. Uh, the next one is about, um, best and personalizing best blocks for examining learning blocks at the middle school and how to best meet the needs for students. This is an ever-morphing project, process is the best way that I could describe that. Um, you know, when I came in last year, it was the first year of best. There were some great things about it. And then there were some things that teachers felt like we could continue to work on to make it better. Uh, this year we have best at the same time across the school, which has some amazing benefits and also some amazing detractors, which we hadn't, wouldn't have been able to recognize until we tried it. Um, the, the benefits have been, we have the best of the best. We have the home best where kids are, have that same group at least once a week that they're meeting with and talking with and building relationships with. Um, the places that, uh, we can still work on improving is we are looking at a new best schedule, which, um, will allow for some more aligned interventions and remediation across, across the grade level and with, with the unified arts that are assigned to that grade level. Um, it is still being tweaked as of this afternoon. We are still working on some, some new things that are gonna come up to it. Um, the winter iReady benchmark, as we said, is just one data point to help facilitate the decision process on placements for next year and possible summer school referrals. It's one of the data points we have. We look at the whole child. We look at how they're doing in everyday classroom. We look at their iReady data. We look at teacher reports, student grades, previous grades. Is this something that, you know, will help us with those ideas for placement for next year? Um, and then we have been utilizing adaptive scheduling with more fidelity this year now that teachers understand how it works and how to assign students and, and students know how to use it as well to make the best use of the time period. And the final one that we had was increase, um, awareness of strengths and needs at LMS. Um, this past summer, we did launch our first Facebook page. Um, and I think we've been really successful. We've had a lot of traction and a lot of interest in the things that we post when we post. Great information on our, both our Facebook page, our Instagram page. We're still working on getting all the kinks worked out on how to get the two to talk to each other. Um, but I just think it's a great place for parents to go for one more place for information or to ask questions if they have them. Um, so we're really happy about that. Our website has been updated. The front page of our website, I think, is a lot more readable and understandable for families, um, to take a look at what's going on at LMS, to find the information. Um, Mrs. Prevenzel has taken over doing that and she's been awesome at updating with our daily announcements and our, our, um, quotes of the day and different things that we work on in our building each day. Um, and then it talks more about C three PO, which I kinda already touched on in my principal's report. So it's kind of LMS in a nutshell for right now.
Thank you.
Any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Shannon. Have a good night.
Thank you.
So again, technically we are in a non-meeting because we do not have quorum, but I did wanna open it up to community comment. If anyone wanted to provide any community input. Community input, anybody back there? No? Okay. We're gonna close community input. Um, correspondence, should I read that at the next? I think I'll read that at the next meeting, right?
Yeah, I think so.
That's, seems more official. Um, and it was lighter compared to other weeks. It was only a page. So, um, that's good. So superintendent's report.
Yep. So just, uh, to keep the, the board up to date, we are planning on the March fifteenth community forum. That's the one that's on the calendar, um, for a competency-based grading conversation. And so Mary and I have talked about that. We haven't done a ton of work in terms of organizing what it would look like. But our vision is that we would do some sort of presentation of where we are and then we would take feedback from, uh, community members who attended so that we can, pardon me, hear from the, uh, families as to what they're looking for relative to competency-based grading. Um, enrollment report for you. So Jen had mentioned, um, that she showed you her enrollment. But let's just take a look across the district for a second. This is obviously for the month of January. And you can see on the twenty-seventh that, uh, Griffin is right back to where they started from. So they had gained some students, but then they, uh, in the month of January had some students move back out. So they've gone from four thirty-nine up to four forty-four and then back to four thirty-nine. Um, at the middle school, uh, Jen started at three fifty-five and as she reported, she's at three fifty-three. So they've lost two students over the course of the year. And the high school started at four twelve and is up to four fifteen. Um, so they've gained a few students. On the whole, as a district, we're up plus one. So our enrollment tends to be stable and, um, it's reflected here again. And I think if you saw in Dan's newsletter, Griff- Griffin, and he reported at the last meeting, kindergarten registration will be beginning fairly soon. And we'll track the numbers the same way that we have in the past. So you'll start to see down below, probably with the February report, um, exactly how many kin- kindergarten registrations and first grade registrations we have. Um, the first grade registration, you sorta look at the sixty-six kindergarteners, um, and you assume they're gonna stay with us, but that's not always the case. So, um, and then we, we also assume, because if you look at it historically, we gained twenty students who are not with us in kindergarten. And so we wanna keep track of that also and see if that's gonna be the trend, uh, that we'll follow through. Uh, we close that. And, um, I wanna report to the board that Doug and I have been invited to staff meetings by the principals. Um, we attended the LMS meeting today and then, uh, went down to GMS and attended their meeting. The purpose in us going is to explain to the faculty, the, uh, the warrant articles that are in front of the voters this year. Um, we're taking the opportunity to make sure that our teachers understand, especially the gap between the, uh, default budget and the operating budget, um, so that they can explain that to parents if they're asked about it. Um, because as we know, it's the most significant gap that's, that's been in a while. Um, and I think it's, it's imperative that our staff can talk about that. And our staff also, while we're not trying to get into any scare tactics, but they need to understand that if the voters do not support the operating budget and the default budget is what we are, um, implementing for next year, there will be some pretty serious discussions made about how to close that gap. Um, and unfortunately, th- those discussions are gonna be about people and programs and so forth. And I just think the faculty needed to hear that and needed to be aware, um, that that's what could occur if we do not message well and have our population understand why the budget as presented is important for us to have passed. So we're taking that opportunity with staff meetings. And then the high school, um, meeting is next Monday, so we'll do the, the same conversation there. Um, and all of this is prior to deliberative, so that people also have those dates on their radar and know what's coming. The last thing is, uh, legislative update. So I, I want the board to know that I attended, um, a session sponsored by the NHSAA, the Superintendent's Association on Monday, um, relative to updating us on where all the legal law proposals are, et cetera. Um, and at that session, Representative Lad, who chairs House Education, he's from Haverhill, New Hampshire. He spoke to everybody and one of the things he talked about was the importance of building aid. And Tina, thank you for, uh, putting together the letter that went, um, to the committee. Um, and I didn't take a look at it until I got back, but it was well done.
Thank you.
And I think, um, when he was presenting, he talked about how there are numerous bills that are attempting to increase the amount of money available for building aid. And what I became aware of in listening to his presentation is he's acutely aware of the demand. Cause he talked about how there were more school applications this year than ever. He also was acutely aware that it, it wasn't enough, because it was only gonna fund the top three schools. And then he went as far as to say, and, you know, right behind those three is Concord School District in position number four, um, with a big project. And, you know, they're strongly advocating. And he stopped at that point. So as soon as this, as soon as the presentation was over, I beelined to him and I introduced myself. And I said, I'm, I'm here from district number five. And I want, I wanna tell you my story, or our story. And I invited him to come down and take a tour, because he had said he had gotten in his car and he drove up to Colebrook. He wanted to go see what the neediest school in the state was. And I said, and the other thing is, even though we're number five on the list, we're twenty points behind Colebrook as the second neediest school in the state. And I got his attention because, uh, we had a great dialogue, great back and forth. I hope he takes me up and comes down for a visit. Um, but I really felt like the, uh, he's, he's aware of what is necessary relative to building aid. So I wanted you to know that I had had that dialogue and, um, if I get, if I get him to come and visit, I will make sure that our local reps know about that and I'll make sure that board members know about that, so that we can have that dialogue.
I think it's encouraging that there are three, three bills, um, that were heard on the twenty-fourth. Um, I don't believe any action was taken on them, but they're just kind of still in the running. They haven't been, been dismissed off the table. So, um, that's encouraging. I know that, um, a community member in our town, Gail Behringer, has been watching our facilities meetings and our school board meetings. And she's been posting, um, quite, she actually posted, um, asking our representatives, you know, wh- what are you doing to get us building aid? So I appreciate that our community's becoming involved. Um, you know, NHSVA has been testifying on, on our behalf and, you know, we'll continue to advocate as far, as much as we can.
And, uh, to me, um, I, I, I just felt like, uh, Representative Lad was very open to the dialogue. I did not feel that it was a quick shutdown. I didn't feel like it was anything, uh, and any kind of negativity to it. Um, he, he made it clear that, uh, with the current makeup on the committee, because the House Ed is split at ten-ten between Democrats and Republicans. That's not happened in a long time. And so, you know, you're either gonna have a forced tie vote along party lines or you're gonna have to compromise and figure out how to reach across the aisle, as, as they say, and, and figure out what the right thing to do for taxpayers is. Um, and so I took every opportunity I can to sort of drive that point home with him. Um, and I hope he takes me up on the offer. I'll follow up with him. He said he has four hundred emails a day and he spends all weekend responding to emails. And I'm like, wow. So I just, I know I have to email him by Friday, uh, to extend that written invitation. So I will do that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And that's what I had for you today.
Okay. Uh, we are not gonna be able to address public minutes, so we will do that at the next meeting. Um, it is our first meeting of the month, so today is typically just an update for business and operations. I'll turn it over to you, Doug.
All right, great. Thanks. So, uh, Litchfield is a Senate Bill Two or SB Two town. So what that really does is it provides a lot of local control over the budgets of the town and the school. Uh, two important meetings coming up. One for the school is not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, and that's a deliberative. And then the annual meeting is March fourteenth and that's at the, the voting time for the budget of the school. Uh, so to make sure that people are, um, kind of informed and aware of what they're voting on, we put into the DRA, which is Department of Revenue, as well as we post in two public places. But I think more importantly now, we also post on the web. So the two public places that three forms are posted are here at the town hall as well as the high school. So what's posted is the operating budget, default budget, and the warrant articles. Uh, so for the warrant articles, we have four positions. And that would be the school moderator, school district clerk, school district treasurer, and school board member, one school board member uh, that will be up for voting on March fourteenth. Uh, and they have until, I think, this Friday at five?
Yeah, and if, if I could just cut in for a second. So I spoke with our school district clerk, uh, Terry Brien, who's also the town clerk today. And she directed me to this website. Um, it's, it's actually a link on the homepage of the town. Um, and so let me, actually, let me show you how I got there. So we shouldn't keep this nice and transparent. From the homepage, you have this news update that starts to scroll. And you see the Litchfield twenty-three open positions. Click the link and it will launch you into, uh, this page where you can see, and she said this is up to the minute. If somebody comes in to file, she accepts all the paperwork, processes it, and then she goes down the hall and types it in on this website. So.
Oh, so those are, those are people who have registered?
These are people who are running for, on the town side, open positions on the town side. And you can see it's open through February third at five PM. And if you scroll down, you see on the school side. So right now there are two people who have filed for the one school board seat. Um, nobody has filed for the moderator position. Terry has refiled to run for school district clerk. And our treasurer Lynn, um, has told us that she's going in to file, um, tomorrow, I believe. She, um, she had stopped by the other day, but she got there too late. So she'll, she'll make sure that she has filed for school district treasurer, um, before Friday at five. So there it is. It's hot and it's easy to check and you can see exactly what the status is on both the town and the school side.
Great.
So if you don't mind doing the same thing to show people how to get to where these three forms are, so we'd start at our homepage.
Oscar, can you put the screen on the TV so people can follow this link progress?
Do you mind starting it?
Yep, yep. So I'm on the, uh, wait till it shows up there. There we go. So I'm on the home landing page. And I'm just gonna go to district and I'm gonna go to district information. And then it brings us right to the twenty-twenty-three annual meeting information. You can see over on the right-hand side is all the archived information back to twenty-eighteen, if somebody wants to go back and take a look. Um, but the center information here at the top, um, is the current, uh, posting documents, right? So we've got the operating budget for FY twenty-four or the MS twenty-seven form. And then we have the default budget, how that was calculated, and then the actual warrant articles themselves.
So, talked already about the difference between the operating budget and the default budget. So these are three forms. We do believe that we, uh, need to and want to provide more information to the town to kinda talk about the difference. Uh, but just to go a little bit over the operating budget. So when we started that, that starts at the school level and we asked them to come in with a lean budget. Each of the schools did come in with a, a lean budget. Um, and then what happened at that point was that as it became the superintendent's budget, we made more cuts to that budget as well. It went to the school board. The school board made over around two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, uh, of further cuts to that budget. And then it went to the budget committee and they made two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand further cuts to that budget as well. So what started as a lean budget kept getting cut as well. Um, it is still up from last year and some of the stuff that it's up for, it's no fault of anybody. Some energy prices, which we're all experiencing at home with electricity or oil or propane, um, as well as, as just some, some raises that, that go in with the contracts for, for the teachers and the assistants, which is a good thing, because we want to retain the people who we have here in Litchfield. So as we look at the difference in the numbers, I do wanna kinda first point out to say that while the first number is higher than last. So, as we look at the difference in the numbers, I do wanna kind of first point out to say that while the first number is higher than last year, it, it has been cut down from what has started from a lean budget this year, even further at each of the stages that it went through. Um, and definitely more information to come out about the two numbers. So, that's all I have today.
Thank you. Any questions, Tina?
So, one of, one of the things that um, and I think I have this under this section is typically, so going into, this is our last meeting before deliberative. Although we're not in a meeting, we're in a non-meeting, but we normally divide up who's gonna present which warrant articles. Um, I can tell you, we have already started a draft PowerPoint presentation, very similar. We're using last year's template. We'll get all of that updated, but um I think we're gonna have to have like a maybe a special meeting next Wednesday, just to make sure that we have our, our um direction on how to proceed going into uh deliberative, because it'll be here before we know it.
Yeah, I think we should circulate an email with some available dates for that, for either, for next week. Yeah, we have to prepare for that. And that's normally what tonight would be. So, I'm gonna hold off on that first. So, reports, I think we can skip and do um next time unless, I mean, it's just you and I, so I think it would be better.
I don't have any updates anyway.
Okay, me neither.
Uh, ju- just if I may on reports. So, uh, I had a conversation with Kyle. And Kyle is planning to be at deliberative, so this is a facilities kind of update. What I'd like to do is have the GMS progress meeting on Monday. He has um, it was interesting because Suzanne and Calvin had done renderings of the building that Kyle hadn't seen. They had never gotten presented, but the renderings were completed. And um I said, well, why don't you share those with the committee, uh, the progress monitoring committee on Monday? Um, and then if we're okay with those, Kyle's intent is to come to deliberate to set up uh on display boards. Because warrant article two is on land purchase for the Robin Riley Memorial School. And I think um, you know, I think the public's de- deserves to know that we put work into this. This isn't just, hey, we wanna buy a piece of land to do something. I mean, we, we put some work into developing it. And so, Kyle's intent is to be at deliberative with uh renderings so that we can share those. Um, and I'm kind of excited to see what, since Kyle hadn't seen them, I'm excited to see what is there.
I won't be able to make that meeting.
You won't be able to on Monday?
But if you can share them with me, that would be, I can give you, okay. Eleven on Monday.
It's Monday at eleven?
If I'm able to, I will hop on, but I don't think I'm gonna be able to, but I'll try.
And then we, the, the other option is that we wait until Wednesday's facility meeting um to, to do it there, but.
That's tight. Um.
It, it is tight.
I might be able to make it on Monday now that I think about it. I have a new schedule at work, so I might be able to make it work.
If we shuffle the meeting an hour, is that?
No, I think eleven is actually perfect.
Why don't you guys connect after?
Okay.
And then I'll be back up if needed.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, yeah, so Ky- Kyle is the architect. I'm sorry. So, we, we all know Kyle, but uh that's a good point, Doug. Not everybody knows who Kyle is, so.
Okay, so we are done with reports for new business was planning for the, the February eleventh deliberative session and who's gonna present what warrant articles. Obviously, without three of our members, we can't quite do that. Um, and so we will circulate some dates for a special meeting to be able to at least um have that conversation as to which of us is gonna present which one. Um, we did the district goals under old business COVID numbers.
Uh, and just on, on policy, if I may.
Oh, I assumed we were skipping over that. Okay.
Yeah, no, uh, just that um I've sent the invite out for the next meeting. And uh there was some confusion because there were four policies listed with no link. Those are just policies we need to get after. However, uh, number one, special ed funding is the draft that um Andrew had shared with us. So, that will go to the committee at the next meeting. And then the second one on wellness, actually, the wellness committee has a pretty good presentation. It's ready to go. So, I told them that they should come and present at the next committee meeting. And then it'll be in front of the board following that if the committee recommends it. So, the other two on home ed and rental are just ones that Michelle um had on the radar, like we need to get after these. Well, we need to get after those still, so we'll, we'll pay attention. We'll get to those. Um, coming to COVID numbers, so hit the link. Um, you know, it's interesting, January, if you look at it, lows and mediums. I mean, there, there wasn't a high week in the month of uh January. Um, and if you look at December, we had a lot of highs. And so, really taking that break and away from the buildings kind of gave everybody some time to get away from each other, I think, because we've come back in better shape. Um, Griffin had, I mean, the last week of January was all low. They, their attendance rates were okay. Um, in terms of COVID, their last reported case occurred on January thirteenth. So, they went the, the last two weeks without any um staff COVID in the building, student COVID. There were some cases that popped up. Um, but three was the max, so it's pretty, pretty contained at this point. If we skip over to LMS, um, I didn't count that high because it was the remote learning day. And there were um a significant number of families without electricity. And so, we just didn't, didn't feel that that should impact the overall illness report. That's a totally different reason why attendance was over ten percent. Um, but again, a couple of staff members with COVID positive and a handful of students, three at the end of the month. And they ended in medium and lows. And then shifting over to Campbell, um Campbell was also high on the remote day. They, they had almost twenty percent not attend, um, which is a conversation that we'll need to have because that's not, that's not sustainable going forward. That's not gonna count if that keeps happening at Campbell. So, um, that's, but again, given the power issues on that day, um, we can understand why that number was as high as it was. And then you'll see there's mediums and lows with only one COVID positive student and one COVID positive um staff member at the end of the month. So, pretty good when it comes to illness. I will also tell you that uh another, you know, an, another victim of removing the coronavirus yellow flag. Remember, we lost all that data. Now, I got the school reports all relinked. And then I got an email from the state because they couldn't find our reopening plan on our website that we're required to have posted. And I'm like, yep, cause it was on the same page. It got deleted. And now I can't find it. So, I'm, I'm working to get it restored as soon as I can. It'll be available again. Um, but I'm also optimistic that the president apparently is declaring the emergency over in May. And hopefully, we won't have to have a plan any longer because there won't be anything to have a plan about. So, there we go.
So, we did just get an email from Jan Sullivan indicating that LCTV stopped streaming at five fifty-five. Um, does that seem right, Oscar?
I still see the live number going up.
Okay, alright, perfect.
I mean, if there's an issue, I can re-upload it once this is done.
Okay, I'll just let her know. She's our minute taker, so she just wanted to kind of give us that heads up.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, school board comments? I mean, again, we're not officially in a meeting, but.
Not officially, no, um.
What are your unofficial comments for tonight, Tina?
Well, I see, um, Mr. Keith is here. Um, I was able to sneak in for a bit of the CHS staff versus students volleyball game. Um, which was very entertaining. I heard the students won, but, but just by a smidge.
Yeah, just by a smidge. They were ahead by two points when the game was called because uh information leaked that Mr. Jengus is actually a professional uh volleyball player. And so, we were disqualified.
I see. I didn't hear that. So, that's important news. Yeah, Mr. Moore had a great showing, by the way. He was, he was, he was doing very well.
A good athlete.
Yeah, yeah, some great serves. So, that was fun. It was great to see the whole school community, you know, in one place, enjoying and laughing and, and having a good time. So, that was nice to see.
Anytime that the staff is willing to embarrass themselves for the students is a good day, right?
Well, that's every day for me.
Uh, school board comments for me, um, I do appreciate Principal Grantham coming in because I did have a lot of questions on that iReady situation. So, I, if I think of more, I will certainly address them with her and copy you. But I, I think um that needed to be addressed. That was on my school board comments. Uh, the other is just sort of a housekeeping matter. I can't find our agendas on the drive anymore. So, I, they're emailed to us in a link.
Get the link.
But in terms of where they're ending up on the drive, I don't know where they're ending up. So, can we, I don't, at some point in the next couple of weeks, figure out?
Yeah, can, can, uh, let me attempt to see if I can guide you there.
Yes, please.
So.
Again, I use the email link, but if you ever up, and I'm assuming that link is going to stay the link. So, if you updated it, it'd be in red and it would be on that link.
So, what I ended up doing, because I, I have inherited so many folders and shared folders from Michelle's departure um that I kept struggling to find stuff because there's a lot of stuff.
Right.
Suddenly. So, I, I had my own stuff to begin with and now I've got somebody else's stuff. So, um, what I ended up doing was starring it. And then when I hit over here in the uh sidebar where I hit starred, it comes up with school board agendas, materials, public. That's the folder that you wanna get to. Um, and so if, if you type in your search bar up at the top, school board agendas slash materials, public.
Okay, cause we do have a tab that says agendas, materials, and meetings. And when you click on that, the last agenda in there is from um when November sixteenth.
Yeah, try this one. Do, if, if you locate this folder.
School board agendas, materials.
Is that in the shared drive?
It should be. You see the little person in the folder tells us it's a, um, it's a shared folder.
Okay.
I, I'm hoping that's coming up for you and then.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so maybe we can work on it, but I'm just letting you know that again, the email link is working. But if I wanted to go and find.
Yep. Let me, um, so we, I think between Barbara, Chris Jamrog IT and Jan, I think we have this ironed out and I think we know where everything's going. And everybody's got permissions, but I'm not sure why they're not searchable and findable. But I, I agree with you. I struggled to find it. And then I finally resorted to, I just hit that star that appears at the end of it.
Once I find it, I'm gonna do that.
And I have one, I have one folder starred, that one, because I need to be able to get to it, so.
So, is, are these, so they used to be accessible through the website as well? Is that not?
No, they still are. And agendas.
But it's not gonna have the linked material.
It is on there. Cause it's all on agendas now. It's just the permissions that are altered.
Okay.
Yep, and so the, the, the basic format at this point, and it's important, I think, the public understand the way we've done this cause we're now providing more, you know, the public has full access. It's a public agenda. If there's a link there, it's a public link. Aside from when you get into non-public. So, if, if a member of the public clicks on one of these links, they will get a notice saying they don't have access to it. Um, I think there's a button that says you can request access, which is gonna be ignored. Nobody, nobody's gonna get access to the non-public stuff. But it's more transparent and more available than it ever has been. Um, and once we have all the folders properly organized and available, it'll be easier for them to search and find stuff also.
Thank you for that.
My last school board comment would be um that I was gonna say during a meeting, but I'm gonna say here um that I already put online is that I would really like to encourage folks to run for that open seat for school board. Um, this year in particular, um, the school board has had a lot of critics. Um, it has a lot, a lot of positivity too, but um, put your name in there, run and give people a choice. Um, because align yourself with someone who shares your beliefs on particular school-related issues. I just, you know, there is one seat and there are two people that are already listed, so there will be, it's not uncontested. But I, I do think there are more people in town um that would bring a great perspective. And um I hope people will consider running and despite the fact that it's been, I complain sometimes, it's been a hard year. And um I'm more than happy to talk to anyone who has concerns about time commitment, who has, wants to know what the behind the scenes is like or how, you know, what you're doing. If you're even thinking about it, please feel free to reach out. I'm more than happy to chat about it, so. Um, that was my last school board comment.
Ditto that for me.
Okay. Community input? Nothing?
I do have a question. Actually, I guess community input. So, um, Patrick Keith, LEA president. So, Mike, you, you mentioned that um you would be meeting, you've met with two of the schools and to cover um the possibly, you know, go over the warrant articles and the difference between the operating budget um and the default budget. And it comes to a little over seven-hundred-thousand dollars. What I'm hearing, and I'm not sure, correct me if I'm wrong, that could lead to, to cuts.
It would have to lead to cuts.
It would have to lead to cuts, okay.
You can't take a budget, lop three-quarters of a million dollars off the budget, which is what the default budget does, and operate as normal. You just can't. And to make up three-hundred, or I'm sorry, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, it's gonna involve personnel, it's gonna involve programs. It's gonna have to be deep cuts.
And that's in addition to um announced cuts of six cuts already in the district.
That's correct.
Four of which are LEA. So, we're a small district. That could amount to s- s- a lot of cuts. I mean, who knows? It could be ten, it could be more, I suppose. Um, a- a- and yet, I, I'm seeing that there's students at the high school, for instance, who are um, who have extra studies. You know, um, some of them have extra um guided studies. Um, there seems to be a lot of, a lot of students taking V-Lax, which, you know, from my understanding, what it was prior, we, you know, a few years ago, only students taking V-Lax were students that absolutely could not be scheduled to class. And now, I'm just looking at a teacher's perspective, I'm sitting here and say, all of our electives have been taken away, most of them. There's kids taking V-Lax, there's kids with early release, kids with late arrival, and we're cutting positions. So, I have to speak up as, as the president of the union, saying, why aren't we, why aren't we making a concerted effort as a district to um, to keep students in school, to keep them off of V-Lax? Cause a lot of the students, when they go to V-Lax, they come to us for tutoring on our preps and so forth. So, it just seems to me like there's a way, other than just cutting positions, to uh retain uh talent. As you know, we've, we've lost a lot of uh talent at the high schools specifically, but in the district over the last few years. Um, and on top of that, y- y- you know, the cuts, and if we have ten positions cut in the district, that's just a lot. And we're already understaffed. We don't have pairs at GMS, LMS, CHS. Um, and it just, it strikes me as odd that we don't have kids in the building. Um, and if they are, they're taking V-Lax. Um, they've got two studies. Um, I, I don't remember, I don't remember in my time teaching in the district, if kids telling me they have back-to-back studies. So, I, I guess, I'm seeing this and, and I've, and, and I've had discussions with lots of teachers in the district that this, everyone's saying, you know, what's, what's going on here? So, I hope that when, I don't know what conversation, you've already been to LMS and GMS and have these conversations. So, you know, I don't know the content of those discussions, but when you come up to the high school on uh Monday, I hope that uh you will address that uh with the staff. Because it's really tough to uh, to work in the district when you're thinking, they're gonna cut me. You know, they're gonna cut my position. And you know, it's just, people wanna work in the district. We love the students, we love the community. Um, but we, we feel like we're on the chopping block when I just find out all these kids, they got two studies they're taking, they should be in classes. We should have those electives. We'll keep those students and, and by doing that, we can keep the teachers. So, I don't know what the answer is. I just don't understand this whole discrepancy between.
Just, so that's part of what we're doing. We're trying to educate everybody on why there's such a discrepancy between the operating and the default. And really, the message, I think, is imperative that we get the message out to the community um about the importance of supporting the operating budget. Because the operating budget is already a tight lean budget. It's a responsible budget. We can make do with it. Um, but if we get the default, that's a drastic budget. And you know, we, we're not, it will not be uh continue operations as normal. And so, you know, we should not be, um, we shouldn't be discouraged by it. But come deliberative session, it's imperative that parents are there because as you know. Because as you know, a small, a small group of parents, it's a, or a small group of people, whoever shows up at deliberative can alter that further. And so I think it's important that the community engage and become involved and pay attention. Because otherwise, we're not gonna have the school system that they are accustomed to. That's just the reality of it. And so um we've gotta pull together and we've gotta get the messaging out. And then trust the better angels of Litchfield. I think they're here. I think our parents appreciate what we offer. I think they appreciate the staff. I think they appreciate uh the efforts that we make, but they've gotta vote. They've gotta participate in this process.
No, and I absolutely agree with you on that. Um I'm not sure, though, that you've addressed. That, do you, do you know why there's so many, like, I don't know what the numbers are, V Lacks students. I don't know the numbers of students with with multiple studies, but I've never, I've never even encountered my teacher kids with more than one study. Um a directed, it's regular studies and directed studies. And um so it's a, it's concerning to me when we're talking about budget cuts. I understand that, you know, uh we have a tight budget, whether even in the operating budget. But my goodness, you know, when I came here and and we didn't have that many more students, we had a lot more electives. And we were trying to keep, I remember there's there's talk years ago, keeping kids in school and and uh and it just seems to me that. There's just, I don't know what the numbers are. It feels like there's a whole lot of kids taking V Lacks. We have teachers here that can teach those courses, but we don't run the courses. There's kids with multiple studies. Why aren't we, why aren't they in classrooms?
I do, I do think that is an issue that needs to be addressed and that's a hu- a big conversation for all of us to think about.
I think that was something that was talked about at our last meeting when Belle. Yeah, and Jake was here. They were um talking about needing more electives to be able to place students. Because they have, are running at low on options to be able to place them. So it sounds like, hopefully, you can have a good dialogue about that on Monday at the staff meeting. And then, again, we had suggested to them conversation, they were gonna have conversation, I believe, with Mary Whitman. About fast-tracking um some new courses, electives, to be able to offer some things. So let you guys figure that out on Monday and then maybe bring us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing your concerns. We share them too.
Yeah, appreciate it.
As a kid with a study who uses her study to come bother you, um I'm sure you really want her. I knew it. I knew that was the reason. Um so we had community input. I don't see anyone else here. Um so again, technically, this is a non-meeting. I, we don't have to motion to adjourn. We don't have to do anything. But I thank you for those of you who stuck with us for our non-meeting. And we uh will hopefully be having some type of special meeting in the next week or so to regarding deliberative. And then our next regularly scheduled meeting is uh February fifteenth. Um and we hope to see you then. So, thank you. Have a good night.